In accordance with 940 CMR 29.10, remote participation, adopted by the Greater Lowell Technical School Committee April 17, 2014, Committee Men O'Hair and Committee Men Sheehan and Committee Men Bahu will be participating at tonight's meeting remotely. No in-person attendance or members of the public will be permitted. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance? Of the United States and America and to the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Getcher?
Yeah.
Mr. Sheehan?
Here.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. O'Hair?
Here.
Mr. Tatzias?
Here.
Mr. Gigi?
Here.
Mr. Lemay?
Here.
Mr. Moran?
Here.
I would like to ask the Superintendent to begin the discussion regarding the memorandum of agreements of the Greater Lowell Teachers Organization, pre-educator organization, and support staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first on the agenda tonight, I'd like to start off with the memorandum of agreement between the Greater Lowell Teachers Organization and the Greater Lowell School Committee. This memorandum reflects changes in the working conditions due to COVID-19 specifically for the 2021 school year. And I'll go through it according to article in the contract, beginning with Article 4. The work year has changed from a 182-year work year to 180 days. That was as a result of the Commissioner changing the school year to 170 days and asking that we have teachers in for the first 10 days prior to the school year for professional development. Another change to Article 4 is the workload. We're going to begin this school year, hopefully, in the hybrid A mode, which is 25% capacity, and then move to the hybrid B mode, which is 50% capacity, and then move to the hybrid C mode, which is 50% capacity for academics. And those are all contingent upon the public health data and some of the current health and safety protocol requirements, such as the six-foot distancing. The next part of Article 4 is F about teacher substitution. So if a teacher is absent, they are required to post their subplans into Google Classroom. Whether it be in-person or hybrid, they are still required to post their subplans in Google Classroom. Also, prior to asking a teacher to cover for, in the absence of another teacher, there's sort of a chain of command that will be followed, starting with the supervisor covering first. And if the teacher is asked to combine their class with another class, they will receive compensation for the additional students that are in their classroom. That was in their current agreement. However, the number of students is different. We changed the number of students to meet the total number of students that were going to be in front of them due to COVID-19. The next part of Article 4 is Section G, which describes open house. Due to COVID-19 this year, we will not be having an in-person open house, so teachers will be required to participate in a virtual open house, which we will be having. Article I involves grading. Grades need to be posted by the 170th day, and this reflects the changes due to the length of the school year. Moving to Article 5, which discusses their duties. The duties this year are going to be breakfast, corridor or mall duty during lunchtime and during transition times, as well as lunch duty. They're going to also be asked, teachers will be asked to supervise their students during mass breaks. And there's a schedule of mass breaks that have been provided to them by the Assistant Superintendent Principal. We have some tents. I don't know if you saw them this evening when you pulled onto campus. We have two tents in the front of the building and one tent in the back of the building, and those are available for mass breaks for teachers to take their students outside if weather permitting. Also, in Article 5 talks about sanitation. Teachers are responsible for cleaning their own work areas before and after each class, whether they're moving or not. I'm sorry, if they're moving from class to class, they're required to clean their work areas, and they're not required to clean the work areas of students. Students will be asked to clean their own work areas as they leave to move from class to class. Teachers have been provided with kits, safety kits with masks, cleaning supplies, gloves, wipes for their classrooms in order to facilitate this sanitation process. Moving on to Article 6. This really talks about the leave of absences and some of the laws and regulations regarding to COVID-19. If a teacher is asked to quarantine by the district, the teacher will be paid, and this will not be charged against their sick time. And if they are well enough to work, they will have the option to work remotely. If the teacher happens to be symptomatic and sick, they will not be asked to work. But if they are asymptomatic but just have to quarantine, they have the option to work remotely. Another option for teachers is the FF-CRA childcare paid leave. This is available until December 31st or replaced, and this is another option available to teachers who have issues with childcare. Article 7 talks about teacher evaluation. As you recall, last year, teacher evaluation was put on hold. We are waiting for more guidance from the Department of Education regarding teacher evaluation. And if there are changes made to the educator evaluation system, we will probably have a separate MOA for that as we did last school year. Article 8 talks a little bit about teaching and learning. It talks about the fact that they will be using Google Classroom during their hybrid learning phases, and they are required to teach standard-based lessons aligned to the state frameworks and the vocational, technical, educational frameworks. That's a little bit different from last year, where it was just enrichment. This year, that we are teaching to the standards. They will be required to take attendance. Period 1 will be the school attendance, and then every class period attendance will be taken. Shops will be required to take attendance three times throughout the school day to make sure that students are remaining engaged in the learning process. Learning during hybrid mode is both synchronous and asynchronous. Wednesdays, which is our remote learning day because of the deep clean, it will be a day of asynchronous learning, and teachers will also be available to provide one-to-one assistance for any student who needs help. They will be attending 504 and IEP meetings virtually on those days. Some, what we decided to do this year in regards to hall passes is to eliminate the hall passes and the exchange. So there is a sign-out log in every classroom that students are going to be required to sign in and sign out if they need to use the restroom. Also, we're using a call-ahead method, specifically if a student needs to see the nurse, we're calling ahead. If it's not COVID-like symptoms, the student will be then sent to the nurse. If the nurse says there's no one down there, if it's COVID-like symptoms, the nurse will come to the room and evaluate the situation. In regards to the attendance process for staff, in order to avoid congregating in cluster areas to sign in and out on paper, teachers will now be required, actually, all staff is going to be using a Google Form, an electronic sign-in and sign-out process on the Google Form to avoid congregating in offices. And that has begun already and seems to be going very well. Health and safety protocols, something different. Each teacher is going to be required to wear a mask, follow the six-foot distancing guidelines, sanitize their hands just as the students are required to sanitize, and they are responsible for cleaning their workstation. Appendix F talks about the change in the bell schedule, which is reflected for Period 1. We have extended Period 1 so that when students enter the building, they grab a lunch and they go, I'm sorry, they grab a breakfast, and they head right upstairs to their Period 1 class where they have some time to eat breakfast, and then they will begin Period 1. So Appendix F reflects the change in the bell schedule. And I think that is it for the teachers' MOA. Mr. Barton, our Assistant Superintendent Principal, along with the President of the Teachers Union and Vice President of the Teachers Union, with a group of individuals from the union worked collaboratively to come to this agreement, and I think it's a fair agreement for all, and I appreciate their work in collaborating with us. Are there any questions? Yep, Mr. Carroll reviewed everything, and he gave his consent. He was actually pleased that we were able to work together to be able to get this done.
Other things, like advisory, stuff like that, that's...
So these are the only changes to the contract. All other items in the contract will be as stated.
Okay.
Yeah, I just got a couple of questions. I think it's a great deal. I'm just glad we're getting teachers. You guys came to an agreement. Everybody's in school, teacher from school. I understand there's nine-month and 12-month employees. Does every work group know we cut it down from 182 to 180? So we're losing two extra days.
So the work group that that applies to is the 10-month employees?
Right, I just want to make sure that...
Which is the teachers and the Paris and some of the support staff. Yes, they do know.
As long as everybody knows. The second thing, because I was looking through the contract last night. We're going to use administrators in the classroom if the teachers aren't there?
So if a teacher isn't there, we can't get a substitute? We have used administrators before, and we will use them now, yes.
Okay, so I guess, in the contract, explain it to me, right? Because you guys have done this for a while, the recognition clause, like the guidance counselors, school adjustment counselors, they're all under the teachers, right?
Correct.
Would we use them before administrators?
So, no, because they have a job to do during the school day. So we would use the cluster chairs first if we had difficulty getting subs. Just for the record, we did have the substitute training, I think it was Tuesday, and we had over 25 substitutes show up for the training, so we gave them COVID training. So we do have a list of substitutes, and we have hired two building-based subs that will be here every day, and I think three long-term ELA history subs who will also be here covering. So right now, I think we have a good pool of substitutes. We'll continue to build that pool. But if we had difficulty and we could not get coverage, it would go to the administrator first, and administrators have provided coverage in the past.
I'm just asking you, because your contract's a little different from ours, and I just compare it to the union, where we got to go first in the work group and then out of work group. So I just want to make sure that was, that's how...
Well, I think we talked about it, but going in the work group would might mean we would have to combine classes and bring students together, and that might be difficult for a student...
Yeah, no, with the space. No, I understand. I just, when I was reading it last night, I saw a guidance counselor, a school adjustment counselor, stuff like that, and they're in the same clause, and I didn't know how it worked, that's why I'm asking that. And then I just got two questions on Wednesday. Wednesdays, everything's going to be synchronous learning where the students dial in?
So, no, Wednesday is asynchronous learning.
Right.
It's an asynchronous learning day, meaning they will dial in, but it's asynchronous. The teacher might not be on with them at all times, but the teacher would have provided an assignment and checking in. At the same time, that teacher would be giving one-to-one assistance to students who need assistance, and that teacher would be attending IEP and 504 meetings.
That's why I'm asking. I wrote down asynchronous, and I said synchronous. So there's no synchronous learning at all on Wednesdays, correct?
No, it's asynchronous.
And that's why we lost the 35 minutes for the one-on-one training after-school for the teachers?
So, no, yes, the after-school for teachers is embedded into...
The Wednesday.
The Wednesday, correct.
My last question.
Because it would not be equitable, because the teachers are only required to stay one day, and that wouldn't be equitable for all students.
No, like I said, I think the agreement's, I'm glad everybody's here. That's all, I'm happy about that. Last thing about Wednesdays. When we're deep cleaning the building, that means everybody, no one's in the building, correct?
No, that's not correct. So there will be people in the building.
So how are we going to deep clean where they are?
So that could be done after, when they leave. So administrators will be required to be here. IT staff, the business office, will be in the building till their workday, which is 3 o'clock, and then those offices could be deep cleaned at that time. The deep clean is really to clean the rooms and the common areas where students were because of the shift in different students?
All right, yeah, I guess. I just think no one should be in the building. If we're going to deep clean, deep clean. It just, if they can work from home, let them work from home.
I'm open to discussion about that.
That's not, I just think if we're going to deep clean, we deep clean. Get everybody out of the way and let the custodians do their job, but that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay.
I look at Greater Lowell Tech, and it's nice that the teachers and the administrators have been able to work out this agreement. I just want to make a few comments. Article 4D workload, when you put specifics in like 3 feet, 6 feet, 4 to 6 feet, 25% capacity, 50%, you're opening up yourself to a lot of litigation if it can't be maintained. And I'm wondering if there was different language that could have been used. Did anybody discuss something different there? And then when do we actually go back to, there's no language in there when we return back to normal school?
So it really says this is for the 2021 school year, reflecting working conditions during COVID-19. And if anything to change, we would come back to the table and renegotiate and move back to the other contract.
So if we, yeah, so I don't mean to interrupt, but if we decide at the next school committee meeting, we're going to go to hybrid C? There's nothing that prevents us from doing that at any time, is that correct?
I think we would have to then go back and negotiate that, because that's not what's in our reopening plan that was approved at the last school committee meeting. The reopening plan said right now, we were at hybrid, at hybrid A, and then going to reevaluate and look at hybrid B, which would be next, which would be at the end of marking Period 1. However, we did talk about having a discussion, looking at the October meeting on where we were in a building in regards to increasing the number of students coming into the building.
But based on this language here and based on what you just said, we're stuck with the next grading period, which I find a little upsetting. Is that how you're interpreting it? So nothing's going to change until after the next grading period?
So, I think...
But the data supports otherwise?
I think the plan that was approved reflects that. That's what the plan said, correct? But we said we would relook at it at the October meeting.
Right, so if we decide the data supports the October meeting, that we can go to hybrid model C?
Yes, we would have to...
We're free to do that?
We would have to go back and have a discussion about that with the teachers' organization.
So should there be more flexibility in that paragraph so that we don't have to do that?
At this time, I don't think, I don't think you're going to get that flexibility.
Okay.
Because there's so many unknowns.
I understand the unknowns. The next issue is non-teaching duties. I know that we had a specific discussion here about students entering the building and what the responsibilities may or may not be if we have temperature checks and so forth, and I don't see where that was addressed anywhere in the non-teaching duties.
So it's not, because currently in their contract, they're not allowed to conduct health services. It is currently in their contract that says teachers are not required to conduct health services, and temperature checks would be a health service, and teachers are not required to do that.
Okay, and again, we make all these concessions, and there's nothing about the team and working together to kind of provide a safe environment for the students, teachers, and administrators that enter this building.
So I understand what you're saying about providing a safe environment. However, I'm not sure it's a teacher's responsibility to provide a health service.
I just don't see it as that onerous.
So I think, and I think we're going to have more discussion at the next meeting in regards to temperature checks, and in your packet that you would have received tonight, there is some information on data that's been gathered about temperature checks from medical professionals, which might explain things more, but if you want to have that discussion a little bit more now, I'm open to have that discussion. But as far as the teachers' context and teachers conducting temperature checks, it's not in their current contract, and it's currently not part of their job responsibility. Their current job responsibility is dedicated to teaching and learning.
And it seems like kick the can down the road, so that the time works in that favor.
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by that.
That's just myself. And then teachers will not be required to sanitize students' workstations, desk areas. I know that that's not their responsibility, but if you see a student and students have different cleanliness habits, if a student isn't cleaning the area appropriately, what kind of recourse does the teacher have to kind of remedy that?
I think the teacher would have a conversation with the student to wipe down their table and their chair. The expectations have been set and explained to students. We're going to be going over that with them again during the first week of school, and everybody has a responsibility.
Well, it seems like the teachers are not taking any of the responsibility for ensuring that the area is staying clean, yet this is their classroom, their area, and they're basically saying, "Not my problem." Is that what I'm seeing here?
No, I don't think they're saying that at all. I think what we're saying is that everybody has a responsibility to ensure health and safety in the school community, and the teacher's responsibility is to ensure, to clean their workstation as the student's responsibility would be to clean their workstation. And they have materials to provide students. It's not like they're not going to be part of the cleaning process. They have the wipes, masks, all different things to ensure that their classrooms are clean.
All right, and then Article 4's F, I just see the, it's providing little or no flexibility to the administrators and so forth on the substitution. Teachers will not be expected to cover classes outside of their cohort. Then there's additional compensation if they're asked to do so, and it doesn't have...
That's in their current contract as well, that they get additional compensation if they cover for teachers and take more students during the school day.
But the number of students are probably less than they were then, so what's...
But it's still taking on more students than you're responsible for.
Again, I just look at this as a team effort, and everybody should work together and maybe take on some additional responsibilities once in a while.
So again, on behalf of the teachers, I have to say they've been taking on an incredible amount of responsibility. Over the last 10 days, they've been here getting professional development, getting better in Google Classroom, working on SEL, social-emotional learning, here today, providing a wonderful welcome day for our freshmen. So I'd like to say that they are working together as a school community, and I'm very proud of what they've done over the last 10 days and what they continue to do in order for us to open up school currently.
I completely agree. They did a good job, but they're under a contract to be here to do that, and they do do it on a very diligent effort at that. And then I'm not sure what Google Meet class, Google Classroom assignments, questions, discussion boards, and do-now activity, what is, and that's all done in 10 minutes on remote learning?
So, can you tell me where...
That's page 6.
Which article is that? Oh, page 6 of the contract, sorry.
Yeah, page 6 of the memorandum, yeah.
Page 6, I think.
So page 6 talks about some of their responsibilities at the beginning of the classroom. These are different ways that they can take attendance. They could do it through Google Meet class, a Google assignment, questions, a discussion board, a do-now activity. It's different ways for them to take attendance during remote learning.
So how do they tell if the students logged in on this?
Through these different, through these different ways. The student would actually log in to Google Meet, or they can log in and submit an assignment. That's how they know they're in there. They can answer a question that a teacher posts. There's a discussion board that they can participate in. So these are all ways that you can tell if a student is on in your classroom.
And again, I'm not technologically savvy, but a discussion board, so if they log in, they pose one question, and then they're gone for the rest of the day, their attendance is fully counted?
So the, not necessarily. The attendance is taken at the beginning of the class, but attendance might be taken by saying, "I want you to submit the assignment at the end of the class," so I know that you participated. So there's different ways to take attendance. Sometimes it could be taken in the beginning of the class, sometimes it would be taken at the end of the class.
So the students don't know when the attendance is going to be taken?
So the students do know, these would be the ways that the teacher would identify and say, "This is my expectation for you today, and this is how I know you're going to be participating."
I don't have anything further.
Thank you. Okay. So I guess I would ask for...
Could I ask you a question?
Sure, Mr. Bahu.
Ms. Davis? Thank you. I know we had a pretty long discussion in our last school committee meeting about possibly opening after October. However, there is certainly nothing listed in this agreement with the teachers that says that we may revisit that. So as a school committee, I'm pretty sure that we could sort of amend that to go ahead and create a line that says that this would be open for discussion in the October school committee meeting to see the direction that we may want to go based on the data we have from the first month of school. Is that something that the school committee would be interested in doing?
Are you posing that question to me, your fellow committee men?
I'm realistically proposing it to my fellow committee.
Where are you on that?
Would anybody be opposed to that type of line in this contract so that we could go ahead and possibly get as much as 50% of our stock to create that option B prior to the end of the first marking period?
Is the attorney on the line?
No, the attorney's not on the line.
Just to kind of address that, I almost look at this memorandum here as to kind of follow more traditional education within the state. Hard to believe that our vocational school is a little bit different in that we're kind of, and as discussed in previous meetings, I think everybody's goal is to get everybody back into the school as soon as possible, which is supported by the data in our respective communities. And that's why the governor, Desi, and all have pushed it all the way down to the lowest level that they can push it down to our level. Yet, everything that I'm seeing in these contracts and that kind of take it right back up to the state where it's taking our discretion away. to the state where it's taking our discretion away. A little bit unsettling, cause when I look at that, we're, we're basically bound now to kind of follow hybrid A, hybrid B, hybrid C, and that's what I wanted to avoid at the last meeting. And I'm a little disturbed at the moment, but I'm learning as I go along. Um, as everybody else, it is a little bit unprecedented. But all these lessons in life sometime will come back.
So Jill, you and Mike have been in the meetings with the teachers during the MOA, MOU.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, October hypothetically speaking, the numbers, the numbers go down. And I mean, I'm reading and, and Captain's 100% right, we're kind of stuck with this language and it is what it is, that's the hybrid we're going up.
So right now.
Would, say the numbers come down, October, six, eight weeks away from now.
What numbers are you talking about?
COVID numbers.
The public health data is.
If the data comes down, it comes down. Would the teachers object? And you guys have been in the room with them, so you would know, to going right to mode B in October? If the numbers, the data supports?
So right now, the data does not support that. Right now, we're at 5.8, we're in the yellow and it's.
You know, I, I, I realize that, we have two whites, a yellow and a green.
Well, where to follow the, the yellow?
Right, I, I, I understand that. Well, if we would have did this last month, there was no yellow and we'd, we'd be looking bad right now, correct?
No, I don't think, I don't think it's about looking bad. I don't think it's about looking bad.
No, I'm just saying the data, the data wouldn't support a 50% opening, okay? All I'm asking is, if we have two whites and two greens, would the teachers support going directly in October to a hybrid mode B? You guys have been in the room.
I, I'm not sure they would right now, and I'm not sure I would right now.
I'm not, I'm not saying September, what's today, September 8th, 10th? I'm talking October 17th, whatever the next.
Again, as I said last time, I'm not sure I would.
Okay.
There's a, there's a lot to look at.
Okay, but it's subject to look at at that time, I'm sure.
There's a lot to look at.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not seeing it with what I'm reading right now. We're kind of stuck with the language that they put in paragraph number two.
Yeah, but if the numbers were worse, we'd be kind of stuck too on where we would go.
We might even regress to a different model at that point if the numbers are worse. If that doesn't give us the flexibility to do anything from A, B or C right now.
Well, tell me realistically, why are we stuck? Why, why can we not go ahead and, um, add a line and send it back to the teachers and have this discussion at our next school committee meeting? Which is going to be in a week.
Well, the only drawback to that is we're kind of into it now, Fred, cause when I saw this, I was, I was a little bit more heated than earlier in the day, but I've actually calmed and reflected. We need to get the school open. The administration has done a really good job in, in doing it. And when I drove in here today, I was extremely proud of what they had accomplished. And that helped offset what I saw when I read this thing. And it is collaborative, it is a give and take. And right now, we're not having some of the problems that we have in other school districts where teachers are calling in and not gonna do what they're supposed to do and going under that, um, family medical leave. We could have a lot further complications. So, and when Jill, the superintendent, says there's a lot to consider and take in, I get it. And it's a lot of time and effort that has gone into it. I'm wondering if there's a way that maybe we as a committee can be more involved in some of these negotiations before it gets to this stage. Um, because the, I think we have three functions. One is policy setting. And I think we got circumvented a little bit on the policy setting here on that paragraph alone. And I don't think it was intentional by anybody. And that's just my thoughts.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that we cannot propose an option B to the teachers' union and to see if they may be interested in allowing that based on data that comes through the school and through our cities and towns for safety measures first, but also another option to have more students in the building. I think teachers' organization, the teachers' union could go ahead and have a discussion about that prior to our next school committee meeting. I don't believe it's something that's totally out, um, of the question. Let them go ahead and make, have a conversation about it.
Well, school starts on September 14th, Mr. Bahu, that's Monday. Do we wanna have teachers here on Monday or?
Well, realistically, uh, Ms. Davis, I'm sure you're only, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm working with the teachers' union. I'm sure this is not something that was voted on by the whole teaching staff, or was it?
Yeah, the teaching staff ratified it, that's why I'm bringing it here to you tonight.
The teachers' union ratified it?
Yes, correct.
So Freddie, basically, just.
Okay, so the teachers' union is, um, eight to 10 people. So can we have a discussion with those eight to 10 people?
The teachers', the teachers', the teachers' union was, they took it.
And general feedback in on it. Is that something that's out of the question? Personally speaking, I don't think it is. Asking a question is all it is.
If, if that's what you're recommending as a board, I will ask the question. And yes, I can't guarantee you'll have teachers here on Monday, I can't.
I don't think it's anything that we can't speak about or talk about at any given meeting or every, any month. I mean.
I, I agree. I, I think it's something.
I mean, I agree with you, school starts next week, but, uh, we could talk about it next month, we could talk about it November, December, as things change. And things are gonna change. To what? I don't know. It's a fluid situation. We don't, we don't have all those answers.
Just to, to explain, this was not, this, the workload is based on the reopening plan that was, that was approved, and that's the workload that went into this contract.
Sure, and I understand that, thank you for that. But I think it would be something that would be nice to have here, that the teachers' union would be interested in having that option available to the students, to the school, to the school community. There's nothing wrong with asking.
Yeah, yeah, just I look at this.
Would you, would you be interested, would you not be? "No, thank you," you know, "we've spoken to the other teachers in the union," I'm sorry, the other, the union department. And they all agreed that that's not something that we wanna do. "Okay, thank you, thanks for asking." Actually, maybe we would like to do something like that because it is an option to go ahead and have more students in and have an option B, be the hybrid, that could work and it would affect shop teachers. So, they can have that discussion. But to have a discussion doesn't hurt, right? And as Mr. Kemp, Kempson, um, started speaking about, the school committee has not been involved in any of this conversation, you know, except for tonight. Well, it would be nice if, you know, one of us or two of us could be a part of it and have this conversation as it moves forward because it is policy.
Absolutely, there's, I don't have an issue with that at all.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Okay, look at, I, I mean, I do this every day. We can't change this now, they ratified it. We have to vote on this. If we wanna go back next month, next week with Jill and say, "Hey, can, can we get some flexibility in Article 4D?" We're more than welcome to do that. And they're more than welcome to, to tell us no or yes. Okay, but right now, school starts Monday. If we go back to them now, they've already ratified exactly what we're gonna vote on. We need to vote on this. I mean, like, everybody knows I want a more tactical time, okay? I voted no for the reopening plan. And you know what? Looking at the data now, I was wrong, little jumped up. I'm part of the problem because I want more kids in the school. I go to Jill and say, "Hey, how do we get more kids in the school?" I'm part of that problem, we're stuck with this. I'm not saying the agreement with the number of kids we have in the school. No one anticipated COVID. But this is what we, they, they negotiated, we put them in charge, that's what I heard last month. We put them in charge to do this, this is what we came up with. We need to vote on this, and if we collectively as a group, as a school committee, want to go back to the teachers, we're more than welcome to go back to the schoolteachers next month and sit down and bring everybody together, but we need to act on this, this is what they ratified. And I, I'm just afraid, that's why I asked if the lawyer was here. We're not bargaining in good faith, no, they ratified. We're going to change something they ratified. Okay, Captain, you're 100% right, maybe we weren't involved in the process, but this is the best that we came up with, we collectively as a team. And Freddie, you're 100% correct, we probably should go back and ask for flexibility, but right now, we can't do that, we, this is what we have. That, that's, that's where I sit with it, I guess.
That, that's why I love the diversity of this board, because Kempson's right, Lee's right, Freddie's right. They all have, uh, good aspects that they're bringing out. But the bottom line, I think, would be at this particular time, we do have this that's been ratified and school starts next week, but it's nothing that we, you know, it's, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, but we have to probably pay a little more attention if we'd like to to make sure that, uh, we're getting our best bang for our buck.
I also truly believe that if, if the data looked better and if our numbers looked better, that I don't see that the teachers wouldn't have a problem having the conversation about that. How, however, I, I, I think now without, I think now is too soon to have that conversation.
Yeah, you need the data to back it up.
And right now, the data is not, is not trending in the right direction.
I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
I'll second. John.
We were gonna do them all, for us, are we gonna do them individually?
I think we have to do them individually.
Individual, yes.
Individual, yeah.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Mr. Sheen?
Yes. Mr. Sheen?
Mr. Bahu?
Sheen says yes.
Mr. Bahu?
No.
Mr. O'Hear?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Next item?
The next item is the working conditions for the para, the paras, which mirrors similarly to the teachers. I'll start with Article 3, which talks about the open house, that they're responsible for attending one virtual open house. As far as the workload, again, it, it's the same workload, which just mimics what was in our reopening plan. But their sign out following the safety protocols of wearing masks, social distancing, cleaning their work areas, hand sanitizing and not, uh, cleaning up student desks. Wednesdays is a, uh, remote learning day and they will be responsible for working remotely and attending virtual classrooms and assisting students virtually in classrooms as well as one-on-one virtually. Article 4, I'm seeing a repeat here. Article 4, uh, again, talks about, I don't know, that's substitution, that there's no substitution, sorry. Uh, it's 170, uh, I'm sorry, 180-day work year as well for the paraprofessionals. They'll be responsible for participating in Google Classroom. Their evaluation, their evaluation would remain the same. Uh, I think that's an error there for more guidance. Their evaluation is going to remain the same. And the bell schedule is, is just a reflection of the extended period run. And that's the only changes to the paras. Everything else, they're still responsible for assisting students and their regular workload. We will have paras here every day, uh, paras will be here every day, uh, supporting students, uh, specifically the paras who are supporting our students in our transitional occupations programs, which will be here each day.
So all the paras will be in the building on, on?
Every day, with the exception of Wednesdays where they'll be working remotely.
I guess that, that, that's the only question I have. Cause they, they support the teachers and on Wednesdays is no synchronous learning at all, so.
It's asynchronous?
Right.
For the fact that, so that they can be working one-on-one with students that need extra help?
The paras will be also doing that?
Yes.
Okay, how, okay, all right.
So there will, there still will be virtual classrooms?
No, no, I, I, I understand that, I just, how are they gonna know who to work with? And the teacher's gonna say, "I need to, I need you to work with Lee."
Yes, there's, there's constant communication between teachers and paras and they'll be supporting, uh, the students that they're, that are in their classes.
All right, that was my only question, cause I know they, they, they're huge in the classroom, I just don't know how they could. We're just doing, you know, you know what I'm getting at with the, the.
They've been working virtually all along with students.
Okay.
And they'll continue to do that.
All right.
A motion to approve?
So, second.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
No.
Mr. O'Hear?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Moving on.
So the last contract is the support staff. Support staff, it's pretty simple. It's just the work week schedule. They'll be, uh, expected to work every day, their normal work schedule, with the exception of Wednesdays, which will they be, they will be working remotely from home. And they are also required to follow the safety protocols of wearing masks, social distancing, cleaning their own work areas in their office and, uh, signing in electronically. The leave of absence is the same, uh, as I spoke about earlier in regards to district quarantine. If, uh, they're quarantined by us or asked to be in isolation, their sick time will not be charged against them. If they are asymptomatic when they have to self-quarantine, they will have the option to work remotely. If they are symptomatic, they will not be expected to, to work. If they have childcare issues, the FF-CRA childcare paid leave is also available to them until December 31st or, or replaced. And they are able to also use FMLA. Uh, if they use FMLA, they have to use their sick time. And their evaluation process remains the same. It is not affected by, by this. And those are the changes to the support staff contract.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Seconded by Mr. Tatsias.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
No.
Mr. O'Hear?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
And that's, that's my report for tonight, thank you.
Could I ask a question before we?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Because I know we're meeting next week, but school starts Monday. How we look in transportation mode wise? What's the latest, have we all?
So we are offering transportation to our students this whole year and we are providing transportation as normal.
Transportation companies are all set to go though, I mean, there's no ramifications or?
No, transportation company is set to go. Uh, I think that has a lot to do with the memorandum of agreement that we developed with them in the spring. Uh, I think that's important, so they were available to us.
I'm just looking for peace of mind, that's all.
I mean, I mean, that, yes.
This is, I.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jump one, Curtis is back here, uh, the sports. I know we're starting some of the sports and I got a couple calls because the kids are gonna be working remotely. And are we expecting the kids to get here for practice remotely?
Yes, so students have to be able to get here if that's not their in-person, uh, school day and we will provide them with a bus home.
Is there any way, shape or form we could look at? providing a couple of buses to pick them up in certain spots? Get, given the fact, I, I know this is a big ask, I don't know how to go about it. You, you know, uh, Houston local kids, you have to meet at, uh, you know, the Dunkin' Donuts on the corner, you know, Sixth and Bridge, or the Patagonia kids, you have to meet at Father Maguire, the Highlands kids, the Corner Stevens and the 99 Park, you know, something to that extent so we can get these kids here. Because I, I mean, it might turn off some of the kids that could use the sport, that want to do it. I, I don't, I don't even know if it's possible because of the numbers of the bus.
Yep, we would have to.
Is there any way we can look into that?
I would be more than happy to look into that.
Yeah, last thing, the after dark program with Lowell, it's kind of in my craw because they're going to be doing remote.
So the after dark program with Lowell, we're committed to doing because we have funding from the state to do that.
Did we ask the state to get out of that during COVID?
Yes, I did, and we have federal funding from the state that we, we are committed to that. We signed a contract with them prior to COVID-19, and we are committed to doing that. Uh, and there, there is student interest.
How are they getting here?
Transportation.
Are we supplying it to them?
It's to, it's mutual.
All right, so if we.
They're getting here with their buses and we're getting them home with ours.
I'm just wondering how they're getting here with their buses when they're not in school?
That would be a question that we would have to speak further about as we, uh, discuss more what, uh, after dark looks like. We're just in the recruitment process and the city and, uh, members of the Lowell Public Schools are recruiting students now. Uh, but part of the agreement was that they would get students here and we would, uh, be able to get students home. That might be a concern if they can't get the students here. Uh, it hasn't been brought to my attention yet by anybody from the city.
I don't think it'll ever be, but that's my opinion. I just, just, can you, can we please look into trying to get those kids that want to play sports here? I just think it's important. I, I, I really think that's important, to try to get these kids here that want to be here. And I know we're going to be restricted by 25 in a bus, and I get that. But I really think it's important we try to get those kids here. All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Motion? Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Mr. Sheen?
Mr. Sheen, motion to adjourn?
He must have dropped off.
Maybe he's gone.
So moved.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Oheya?
Yes.
Mr. Oheya?
Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
George answered that.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Thanks, everybody.